United States of America, into the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Can you oppose?
Mr. Carriers, next we got the MSBA Monthly Report.
Welcome to the November edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the 2025 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with MASA and Moazbo. This year's event was once again held in Kansas City. MSBA President Shelley Mantel got the conference off to a great start at the first general session. During her remarks, she stressed the importance of local school board service.
When I was a student, and even though my father was a teacher, I had no idea there was a school board in the background guiding those places of learning. The work of school board often goes unnoticed, but our work is critical to the success of our districts. As leaders in public education, it is our greatest duty to ensure that our districts have the administrative and fiscal strength to provide the best possible education to our students. It is imperative that we advocate for fair and consistent funding for our children, that we represent the people who elected us, and that we take very seriously our fiscal responsibility to our patrons.
During the third session of the conference, Missouri's 2026 Teacher of the Year Kimberly Sixto was recognized. She told the crowd that whether you're a teacher, an administrator, or a board member, everybody has a role to play as a champion for public education and our students.
And that every single student deserves to feel success, every single one. And they deserve to have their potential recognized. So, I know when my students leave my class that they most likely won't remember the 27 amendments that I've tried to drill into them to be ready for EOC testing. I mean, there's a hope. But, I know that they will remember how I made them feel. And I want that memory to be a good one. I want it to be something that they can hold on to and say, "She believed in me." So, to all the school board members out here tonight, I want to say thank you. Thank you for the time you devote to our young people and to the education staff across the state. It doesn't happen without you. Thank you for working diligently to problem-solve educational issues that often feel insurmountable. I know they do. Thank you for taking those late-night phone calls from teachers who need help, or the parents who have concerns. And thank you for fighting for Missouri schools and for the value of our educational system. This work doesn't happen without you. It doesn't happen without all of us.
Also during the third session, Suzanne Luther of the Jefferson City School District was presented with the Paul Morris Community Service Award.
But I do want to say, I am so honored to be awarded this with this company because I feel that everybody who steps up as a school board member qualifies for this award.
And Seymour R. Two, Republic R. Three, and Hazelwood were all awarded MSBA Future Builders Early Childhood Education Program of the Year Awards. In addition to the outstanding general sessions, the conference featured more than 80 concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, Missouri's premier education trade show, the Education Expo, MSBA Student Showcase of Public School Programs, and much more. MSBA's Delegate Assembly also met in conjunction with the annual conference to establish the position statements that will guide advocacy work during the coming year. And finally, each year, the Missouri School Boards Association's Future Builders Foundation awards $18,500 in scholarships to students in MSBA's member districts. A winner is selected from each of the 17 MSBA regions, and one overall state winner is selected. Student nomination forms are due by December 18th. Visit the MSBA website for more details. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thank you for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in December for the next MSBA Board Report.
Next we have the Consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve the Consent agenda items just presented.
One second.
My motion is second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Can you oppose?
Mr. Carriers, next we have fellow participation. I did not have any special cards. Thank you. Onto the report, the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome back. First on the superintendent's report is Parent Teacher Conference data from October 23rd, 2025. You can see the number of students enrolled in each building, the number of families participating, and the participation percentage. And then on the right-hand side, I have what the prior year was. So, elementary schools up just a hair for prior years, and then middle school down just a hair, and high school down just a hair. I know we were talking, Dr. Mercer, we were talking about one of the reasons for this. There was something else going on.
We had two different away games that night, and I feel like there was one more thing that just, it's not in my brain right now.
Yeah, I feel like there was one more thing too. Had a school football parade here.
Yeah.
So, a lot going on, families pulled in a lot of different directions, and that has an impact on our attendance. Next on my report is the annual school board election. We have three terms expired. Mr. Eric Bosler, Mr. James Kirchner, and Mrs. Martha Riesinger. The filing location will be District Office at 375 North Fifth Street in St. Genevee. And the election will take place on Tuesday, April 7th. Filing dates, filing will open on December 9th at 8:00 a.m. and it will end on December 30th at 5:00 p.m. Thank goodness it's not December 31st again this year. Thank you, Chrissy, again. Filing will not occur on December 25th, December 26th, and any days District Office is closed. Kindergarten registration, yes, I know, it's November. But we already have it on the calendar. Saturday, March 14th, 8:02 at St. Genevieve Elementary, and Saturday, March 21st, 8:01 at Bloomsdale. Appointments will be, start being accepted on Monday, February 9th, 2026. And onto principals' reports. Look at who we have first.
But you left me, but you left me off the Parent Teacher Conference.
Do you guys do that? Dr. Kettig, what was your...
So I guess next year, we'll just...
What was your attendance percentage?
Well, I know I was missing four families. So, out of the 102 we would have had at the time.
You would have been the crown jewel.
Yeah. Expect to be on here next year, 100%.
Girlie page.
Okay. All right, so let's shout out our little child. We've been a little quieter, October was, was wild. We finished out October with Red Ribbon Week, the first time that we celebrated here at the Early Childhood Center. Officer Cusinelli and Officer Oakes stopped by and let the children get to pet and visit the canine dog and kind of learn about how important he is and the services that he provides. So, there's just some pictures there of the kiddos visiting. We also did all the dress-up days, that was really fun. Have a good day, it was just fun dressing life, and kids have a good time with that. Halloween, we celebrated Halloween the entire day. We trick-or-treated in the morning, so thank you to the Board of Education and District Level Admin that came over. Officer Cusinelli and Officer Clark came by as well, and then all of our additional staff, here Patty in the kitchen, and Stacy, and Sonya, they have those stations they went to and practiced trick-or-treating, saying thank you, and things like that. So then they all had costumes on and got to trick-or-treat around the building. It was a really fun experience. And then later in the day, went for Halloween parties, and we had all sorts of fun activities and games and treats in the classroom. We want to put a shout-out to County Health. They stopped by last week and talked about nutrition with our students. So, they had this little bicycle that they could ride, and the energy from the bicycle made the smoothie machine go. And then the kiddos all got to have a healthy smoothie with fruits and vegetables. I'm not sure they loved the taste, but they all acted like they enjoyed it, but the next day, one of the kids was like, "You know, the smoothie I ate yesterday, it didn't really taste good." But the purpose was the importance of the nutrition and getting our bodies moving. So, they did take that away from it, even though the smoothies weren't as yummy as they thought they were going to be. Not quite like a milkshake, I guess. So, big thank you to County Health for stopping by and teaching our kiddos about nutrition and fitness. And then we have a lot of bragging dragons. Vandy Adams, Beacon Anschler II, Haley Ashton, Jack Bales, Cory Ron, June Burton, Gabe Childs, Ryder Davis, Grayson Elders, Lynn Lee Cleed, Roeey Herzog, Ridge Huff, Annabelle Lowman, Jackson McNeil, Dane Melton, Jamison O'Keefe, Finley Roth, Lucy Ruesler, Delilah Shoff, Vincent Schwartz, Hattie Stafford, Sutton Beberi, Jane No Wiler, and Lex Wilts. And then there's just some pictures on the next page. We were taking pictures of everyone that was getting them, but now it's like we have part-time kids, so we try to do that on Fridays. We celebrate our bragging dragons, and I go around and take pictures, but they're not out here on Fridays, so then going back and catching the pictures. So, they do all get celebrated. We greet off the bragging dragon on the announcement. They get a fun little bragging sticker and send their bragging dragon home to celebrate with their families. But now that we're getting more and more kiddos that we're celebrating, it's just harder. I don't think I can fit that many pictures up here. So, I'm just doing some little bird ones to share them with you. But they love it, and they're constantly practicing those class commitments and safe choices so that they can earn a bragging dragon. And then our November faculty staff of the month is Ms. Rose Kreitler. Some of the things that were said. Rose is always ready to jump in and help solve problems. Her calm, thoughtful approach and ability to explain things clearly make her incredible support. She genuinely cares for those around her. She is always incorporating fun, engaging activities to help her students grow. Ms. Rose has been an incredible leader for our team, and she guides teachers who are new to the district and helps organize our collaborative time. So, congratulations to Ms. Rose Kreitler. Hey. Wanted to say something about that slide. We have more than 473 students.
I think I'll leave that on.
Just making that note. On this Merck slide, we have a picture from Red Ribbon Week. Students were asked to dress like their hobby one day. And we had two students here that walked by, Kinsey Walton. She asked if she could take a picture with them because she was actually painting our mural at the time, so I thought that was a really cute picture, a two-for-one for Red Ribbon Week and for Kinsey. Then on the left there, you can see the completed... I can't even see that. I promise, I will get better at camera.
Me too.
That is our new lobby mural, that's a completed project. We were very happy with that. And then on the right there, we have a picture of Lainey Edg. She's one of our fourth-grade students. Robinson Outdoors came to us and asked if we would participate in a billboard contest. And so, Mrs. Schnitzler did this with our fourth-grade students. And Lainey's picture was chosen, and they were supposed to have put it on a billboard somewhere. And I haven't seen it, but it was pretty neat that she was chosen. We have some Halloween things happening in our building too. Mr. Howell there on the left, I really wish his whole body would have been in there because he was in full costume, but that was just too fun not to put in there. And then we have other pictures. At the top, I have a video that Whitley Gag asked me to include. This is our fifth-grade newsroom. They worked on Power Hour on Wednesday afternoon for about 30 minutes a day. So, mine is only 30 minutes a day. So, there's not a lot of time, and this is not a class. So, they put together a November news report. It's two and a half minutes, and I hope you will humor me to watch it. It is raw, it has some bloopers in it. It's funny, but the kids were really, really proud of it, and it does include our first-quarter power leaders, so if you don't mind showing that.
Hello, and welcome to Fifth Grade's first-ever St. Genevieve Elementary Newsroom Video. I'm your host, Jenna Meyer.
Emily Jugg. And we are going to be telling you all the fun things this month.
Oh, hey there. I'm Owen Williams with your sports broadcasting team, and these are all the sports around St. Genevieve. First off is the River Dogs, and they don't practice until January and play till March. Next is the Settlers, and they don't practice until November and start playing till May.
Oh, sorry, I got distracted. Hi, my name is Rain Hampton. I'm going to announce our first-quarter power leaders. These are our first-quarter power leaders. In kindergarten, Mason McDaniel, Juliana Martin, Renly Roth, Riley Lerk, Isabella Davis, Adeline Schmelsley. In first grade, Kinley Carlson, Sawyer Weeberry, Amelia Fantastock, Isaac Schwetz, Brady Rector. In second grade, Letty Schweiger, Ruby Long, Russell Barr, and Adeline Gag. In third grade, Olivia Leckie, Ryder Walsh, Hudson Meyer, Lily, Lilian Adams, Amelia Durham. In fourth grade, Liam Gag, Orin Getler, Willa Arnold, Kobe Dodson. In fifth grade, the last one, finally, Brady Shu, Henry Gag, Lily Joggers, and Jamison Walk. Now we introduce Miley Abt.
Important days for November. Picture Day retake on November 4th. No school Tuesday, November 11th for Veterans Day. Veterans Day program at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday, November 12th. No school on November 26th through 28th for Thanksgiving break.
Hi, my name is Eli, and this is the joke of the month. What's the robber's favorite shoes? White Vans. Now it's going to be on the line.
So, do a sprint and watch, but you have 30 minutes a day, and they have to learn how to do the rain screen, they have to learn how to do the scripts. Hold themselves and put it... That's a pretty good effort. So, maybe we'll have it in December. We'll see if they get what they need. And then we have our Veterans Day slide. At the top, left up there, there's a picture of one of our... Mrs. Schnitzler always does an art contest, and a winner from each classroom is selected. And then they get to lead the Pledge of Allegiance for the whole school. Dr. Solcer took over this year with Mr. Kingery going to Bloomsdale. She was the one in charge of the program. And we had a few logistics issues we had to work through. We're too big for the pack, so we tried to keep kindergarten and first grade back in their classrooms this year and live-stream it. There was some sound issue. We've talked about possibly using high school gymnasium, and then there's the bleacher issue because you go from having homecoming to where it's a lab assembly to now it's a quiet assembly. So, we worked through that, but it's always a great time, and our veterans are always very thankful. And, I forgot, we also had the issue of the play production. Had their whole set set up on the stage, so we had to use the front green little sliver. So, they had to really restructure how they did their white sample ceremony and all of that, but it all came together. And Dr. Solcer's picture there on the right with our two MCs, Ryan Strick, Ben, and Phoebe. They did a fantastic job. And then we have our Positive Office Referrals. On the top row, we have Abigail Schrum, Charlotte DeBeau, Chase Kreismacher, and Phil Roth. In the middle row, we have Jason Miles, Joey Lauer, Kennedy Ritter, and Ray African Miller. And at the bottom, we have Ryan Karen, Taylor Wallace, Wyatt Gaddiner, Mrs. Janice's entire class, and Amelia Robb. And then finally, we have our Feature Teacher and Super Staff. On the left, we have our Super Staff winner, Miss Vandy Lauer. They said she's contagious, positive, she has an upbeat personality, she's a great role model. She's always helping out, she has positive relationships with students and staff. She's everyone's biggest cheerleader, and she really enjoys what she does. And then on the right, we have Mrs. Jennifer Thomas. She's dedicated to building strong, positive relationships, supporting the rest of all students, always going above and beyond. And she is our student's strongest advocate, and she gives all of her heart and attention to each student.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I feel like the theme in our building since the last board meeting has been celebrations of community. We've had a lot of, four opportunities to bring in community members, like the parents in the building, so we've had a lot of action, just getting people involved. So, first, we've got the Halloween parties and parade, and something we did different this year. The parents, we had them wait in the gym before dismissing the classrooms, so all of the kids could come through, and they got to see the entire school parade parade. We got a lot of good feedback on that. Red Ribbon Week, we had similar to the other buildings. Officer Cusinelli come with some local officers and he had our third graders and just talked about the importance of staying run free, and they got to meet us out there. We had our grade level awards assemblies, so those who've gone away for a couple of years, so we're bringing them back now. They've been an absolute blast. The kids have had so much fun, and a lot of just creative awards given out for hard work with the kids there. So, most of them were done in the gym, but we had to move outside because we had some conflicting times, and they just had a great time up there. Last Friday, we celebrated Kindness Day at Bloomsdale. So, every hour on the hour, our kindness leaders came up and made an announcement about some kind of kindness challenge for the hour. And then this wall you see here was posted, it's our kindness wall outside of the project back there. And students could just leave a little note on there, post-it note, or write directly on it. We had, I took a picture, a close-up there, the cars there, those were posted by Nurse Kelly. She has a really beautiful thing she said to individual students that she might see a lot in her office there. And then another celebration, October 27th, we went to Columbia to celebrate Ashen Gaddiner. So, we've talked about her getting this Regional Teacher of the Year award, but that was, the 27th was the day that we celebrated her at Columbia. And then Brian Wolfen was there to present her. She got the House and State Senate proclamation from them, so a really neat evening with her. One of the new events that we did, so the past couple of years, kindergarten has done this ABC Fashion Show. We decided, we had some board members present, thank you guys for coming to that. This year, we decided instead of just wandering through the halls for it, let's bring the parents in and give them a chance to see it. And the kids had a great time showing off these vests they designed specific to the letters and the alphabet. Each class did either a song or a poem, some kind of presentation, and then they got to strut their stuff down the runway as well to show off their vests. The center two pictures are from our KILO family fun night. We got a grant earlier in the year for a couple telescopes, and the problem with a school having telescopes is schools during the day, so we don't have a lot of opportunity to use them. But the night worked out perfectly. It was cloudy in this shot, but there were a lot of times it was a full moon, so we got just a beautiful view of the night sky. A lot of good feedback from parents who have never seen the moon through a telescope, a lot of just awe and wonder. And then on the right side, our, just two pics from our Veterans Day assembly. That top right one is one of my favorites there. Just kind of captures, and thanks Bailey for that. It's a super special moment for these kids. At Bloomsdale, we actually get to go and sit with their veterans too, so a little extra time there. And then our fourth graders just singing one of their songs. I'm going to read them to you. Cassion from All, Frankie Faravella, Evelyn Rula, Lincoln Gaddiner, Jackson Bull, Chloe Raiber, Tucker Karen, and Connor Myras. Our Staff and Teacher of the Month, Staff of the Month was Julie Boyard. Her nomination, it was written, "Julie has been so helpful and supportive to the staff and students. She encourages them and is always kind and friendly. Thank you so much." And also say she's one of the most flexible people you've ever met, willing to help out anywhere and always when needed. And the students in her small group that she pulls for Title I make tremendous gains and sit so much for their sake. She does an awesome job. Then our Teacher of the Month is our librarian, Molly Bar. Her nomination says, "Miss Bar always goes above and beyond for her students. She sets clear expectations of new teachers, yet still has a fun classroom environment." And I've said this before about some of our new teachers this year. She's got the chops of a veteran, like that natural understanding of what makes it a teacher. And they talk about the balance of expectations and fun, and she does a phenomenal job in the library with that. So, those are our Staff and Teacher of the Month. Thank you, guys. Evening, friends.
Good evening.
As always, thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to start tonight with our Positive Office Referrals. A little bit out of order for me, but we have something to celebrate tonight. You'll see here in just a second. This month, we've recognized Brooke Eads, Ty Theers, Jay Gaddiner, Lavens Blue, Lydia Ferdenka, Trey Roth, Willie Heil, Ian Wolman, who received two this month, Delilah Reeves, Destiny Davis, and Kennedy McLean. And as you know, we award our Dragons on Fire, the Positive Office Referrals, under the three pillars of family tradition and excellence. And when we have a student who receives a Positive Office Referral in all three of those in the same year, they win the additional title of Ultimate Dragon. And this year, as early as November, we've already gotten Ultimate Dragon. Dr. McFar, if you don't mind. Ian Wolman, who I just mentioned that earned two this month, is our first Ultimate Dragon for this year. And he is so proud, he did thus, and we're proud of him too. Ian's just a really wonderful student, who does everything he can to contribute to the school. He keeps his academics up, he's interested in extracurricular activities too. A well-rounded young man that really contributes to our school, so we're proud of Ian. And this spring, we'll take him out for lunch in any of our other Ultimate Dragons. And if it turns out that he's the only one, we'll let him bring a friend so he's not sitting there eating his lunch awkwardly with us all the time versus going in our tomato soup. So, we're really proud of Ian, congratulations to him. Around the horn, at the top in the center, we have a picture there of Easton Marks left. I happen to be very lucky. The day that he achieved this feat, that was at the Arc Mountain Cross-Country Meet. And he's just a sixth grader, by the way, he's a manager, but he participated in the open run, the four, the boys and girls runs. And it was all ages, and our little East didn't finish first that day. And I was very lucky, I got to be there for that that day, that was exciting. At the top right, you can see one of our Dragon Groups there. This is Mrs. Hope Miller's puzzle group, finishing a very patriotic puzzle, just in time to be ready for today. And at the bottom, this interesting lineup is some of our students who are participating in the Monster Dash, which is just a little one-hour field day that they could pay to participate in as a fundraiser for our science class. And part of that was a footrace, and they were allowed to wear their costumes. This happened to occur on Halloween, by the way. So, we spent a lot of time that day, like Nate said, in celebration and in community. We had the Faculty Costume Parade that day, the students had their costumes. We had the Monster Dash, but that was also our first-quarter wings. So, we had a lot of fun that day. Dr. McFar, if you don't mind, we'll move on to the next slide. And on the right, we go to the right first. You can see that's the Faculty Costume up at the top. And we had a little bit of everything this year. We had the Savannah Bananas, complete with a dancing umpire. And I got to tell you, most of my kid moves left 25 years ago. So, I just had some Pac-Man characters, Little Dev Snack Eggs. Lots of fun in that, but if we're going to do that, we're going to make sure the kids get to do it too. So, there's a shot of them too in their costumes that day. And it was really fitting, it was a fun day, and we just kind of let our hair down and joined in the fun with them. On the left-hand side, you can see our students in NHS and Student Council who were able to collect over 1,000 items for local food banks, and they did it at one of the busiest times of the year. I often tell people, when we get into September and October, the best thing you can do is just hang on and watch the calendar. So, for them to pull off something like that in such a busy time is quite an amazing accomplishment. We're proud of those guys and how they're contributing to their community. Our Spotlight Award this month goes to Mrs. Jamie Mittermeyer. We call her the new old dog on the block. She has a lot of very interesting, insightful experience in her background. If you ever get a chance to have that conversation with her, I think you'll be interested in the things that she's done in her lifetime. And you can see the evidence of that in her classroom. She's excited, she's enthusiastic, and she really loves what she's doing. And every time I go to check on her, she tells me that she's happy and that she's enjoying it. And that's very important to me. And as you can see by the kinds of comments we receive in her nominations, it's up to the people that work with her too. As I return to my seat, I'll leave you some calendar dates, so some things that are coming up over the next month. And I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you again. Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
I'm going to turn this over to these guys really quick before I do that. And they're going to talk a little bit about our trip to Ralla today. But I am extremely, extremely lucky to have an opportunity to travel with our students and with our principal's advisory group to go and meet with leaders from other schools. And so, I don't want to steal their thunder, but that's why we're all matching tonight. We went on a trip today and just got a chance to visit Ralla and meet with our student leaders and get some really, really cool takeaways. So, we'll talk a little bit about that trip. But we appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to be able to go and do that and continue to bring those ideas back to the high school. So, with that, Allison Loudon back and Ruth Foth are going to do the Principal's Report for the high school.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, we're going to start with our Positive Office Referring, and we have McKinnley, Bo, Abby, and... Voe, Abby Yomrak, Chase Yamnitz, Emerson Brown, Jacob Warren, Aubrey Schwinn, Nathan Cummings, Colton Grease, Jenna Miller, Claire Geesler, Chloe Meener, Lilian Schwinn, Trinity Monroe, Brendan Quick, and Caleb Capps. And then our Rotary student of the month was awarded to Mrs. Lili Meener. And then our Oak student of the month was awarded to this...
Okay, I'm going to talk about everything on this screen. First, I'm going to start with our sports. I couldn't find any pictures of football, but football finished up their season just weeks ago with a loss in the Districts End final to the score 48 to 41 against Northrop Academy. They ended their season with a 92 record. And then in the top right in your corner, you have your cross-country team. Garrett Gallant finished 27th at Districts, which earned him a trip to state. And then Lori, how do you speak with this?
Faulkner.
What is it?
Faulkner.
Finished 15th at Districts, which also earned her a trip to state. And then she ended up placing 34th at state, which is only four ways, spots away from winning, getting Allstate. And then some events that are also in these pictures up here are, we have our Veterans Day ceremony at the high school, which is also with the luncheon, and then also the parade that we have following luncheon. They look pretty good as she showed us there. It was very nice. It was very enjoyable, and it was very good. We got to honor one of our students who was going into the military after her school, Kennedy Lyric, who also had to sign a pledge of allegiance as well. And then on the left-hand side, we have a MoDOT bridge competition. And each year, Mr. Kenny Rat takes his students, his industrial tech students, to SMO and competes in the MoDOT bridge competition. So we did bring home first place for SGAJES, and then we have our winners. So we have second place, Lili Meener, winning $300. Third place was Grant Wolf, winning $150. Fifth place was Gabby Gates, winning $100. And then also, a special shout out to Carrie Kreidler, who won the most aesthetic bridge out of more than 200 entries, and she also won $100 prize. And then, also down here at the bottom left, that is our principal's advisory group trip that we went on today. We all went down to Ralla High School, and we got to talk with their student leaders in their high school. And we got to figure out basically what they do for their student leadership, their student voice, how they go about different things in that high school. Out today was like, we compare a lot to their high school, even though they're bigger than us. There's a lot of similarities, also a lot of differences. I would say that we took home a lot, we brought home a lot of like, very, very good information and stuff that we are going to try and make our student environment better for our students in high school. So that is that. And I think every year that we go, we like, we realize how good our school is. Even like, their schools are good, don't get me wrong, but our school is so good. Like, this one's great.
Okay. And then, and then Mr. Toons was awarded the Dragon of Honor, and he, he's has been in education for 31 years, and he's left a very big mark on multiple generations of students. He's very dedicated for what, to what he does, and he is included in so many different categories of our school, like sports, academics, and other student development. And then our teacher of the month was Miss Holly Fowler, and I'm going to read the word on the bottom. What have students said about her? "She truly cares about everyone around her and every one of her students, past and present. This student didn't know her very well until this year, but she always made an effort to brighten her day with a smile and a hope and a kind good morning, or by starting a conversation just to check in. Miss Fowler goes above and beyond, not only in teaching, but also helps students figure out life behind high school. Her dedication's making students feel valued, supported, and confident, shows everything, shows them everything that she does. She is deeply loved and respected in her students and fellow staff members alike. And it's easy to see the positive impacts that she has on everyone around her. She truly deserves to be recognized for the depth and intensity of her creativity."
Next on the superintendent's report is safety reports. We don't have any this month, and then notes of appreciation. I believe you have one of your papers. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir.
Oh. Every year Bailey likes me to go through how much food is prepared for our Thanksgiving meal, so forgot about this part. 355 pounds of turkey, 102 loads of bread, 37 pounds of rice, 150 pounds of ground beef, 319 pounds of green beef, 72 pounds of lettuce, 1,683 individual pies, 310 pounds of applesauce, 78 gallons of milk, and of course, a secret ingredient. But I will say that Bailey left out early Chavo Center.
And our pies, our pies are going to be turkeys this year. I brought pretzels and candy corn, determined turkeys. So if you want a turkey pie, stop by here.
She's going to change a lot.
So we will have updated numbers for you next year.
Patty definitely wants to be included in that for her hard work.
Good meal's Tuesday, right?
Yes.
That's what I was told, making a visit to school. It is a good meal. All right, unfinished business, and the first item on that is
So it's really nice to have, you know, just one project going on every day, so you can focus on that. You can see the structure's gone up. It's looking pretty good. It didn't take them long to get the foundation in and the steel beams up. That wall on the right-hand side there, that's about eight, nine feet tall. And then parking is going to extend from the left side of that wall on out to the end of the building. We'll have a curb over there. So come along very nicely. I think we have a couple of pictures stills. All right. Thank you, sir. Next, we have instructional program presentation, high school music.
My first or you first?
It doesn't matter. Who do you want first?
Your choice.
Who do you have on the table?
Oh, you just clicked. I'll go. So there, here you see our, the Israel Music at SGAHS there, and there's our logo that I found online. Someone has a tattoo. And I saw that, and I'm like, that's a pretty cool logo. So I stole the tattoo picture and so I had it online. Been using that for our logo for the past several years. So the first thing we'll talk about here is we have a list of our instrumental and general music classes that I teach. Band, a new class that's in its second year called Modern Band, Guitar Fundamentals Music. So starting off with band, here you can see the high school's first hour, and starts the year off as a marching band. We start preparing our show, halftime show, and competition show, kind of the last two weeks in July, there are the two weeks right before Dead Week, with band camp. It goes from nine to four, Monday through Friday for those two weeks. That's where we learn how to march and move and play at the same time and acclimate, you know, new students, kind of the way we do things. And we start learning the music and the drill that we'll be performing at the halftime of the football games as well as during our competitions. We perform at all home varsity football games, as well as a few local marching band competitions. We host our own marching band competition, the Fourth Saturday in October. We've been doing that. This was our 17th festival this year. We had that COVID year where we didn't, we didn't get to do it. But we've been doing that since Michael Stewart called me in and said, hey, we're going to have a turf field next year. You should look at doing one of those marching band competitions. And I said, well, I'll look at it. He's like, no, for next year. So we've been doing that ever since then. And it's really, it's really grown to be a very large and popular competition in the state. Our district area hosts a good percentage of marching band competitions throughout the state. There's Park Hills, Farmington, Petosee, Washington, kind of all this area hosts competitions as well as us. And we've had, you know, anywhere from, in that first year, I think we had 11 bands to, at one point, we had 30 bands. Parking becomes a little bit of an issue with 30 bands, because bands are pulling up in six buses and semi-trucks and things like that, you know, when you get Ralla, when Ralla shows up, with their six buses and multiple semis for all their equipment and everything. But we generally host anywhere from 20 to 30 bands. And it's really, it's a really great showcase for our community and for our school. I know it's a hectic day, but it's a good one. We look forward to doing that every year. After marching band season ends, which generally goes as long as football's playing at home, we transition to a concert band. We're prepared for concerts in December and May, and our concert festival performances in the spring. During that time is where we spend a good deal of time working on fundamental playing techniques and basics in order to improve their playing skills. Students have individual performance opportunities as well, where we have all district band auditions in November, and then MAA law conference band in January, as well as Misha Solan Festival in the spring. Modern Band, this was, I've been real excited about this. This is our second year doing this. Modern Band is a performance class that focuses on the production and performance of modern pop country and rock music. We use guitars, bass guitars, drums, piano, singers, and whatever else we need to perform covers of popular songs. We're starting to look at creating and performing the original songs as well, students writing their own music and that kind of thing. We played concerts in December and May, and we're looking at a open mic type event this spring, hopefully at a nice local venue that I need to talk to the grandeur about. But the hope is that the class will draw on students that have completed guitar class as kind of a natural progression, for especially ones that might not be in the traditional band first-hour class, but still are interested in music and want to play. So it's worked out really well. We played a basketball game or two last year as well. And it's interesting, last year, the mix was, the kids were really into playing the nineties alternative, which for me, in my wheelhouse, like that's great. We had a really strong guitarist last year and things. And so this year, it's a little bit different makeup. They were doing more of an acoustic kind of set and things. But it's really neat. The kids have a really good time producing, you know, playing music stuff they hear on the radio, and figuring out how to put it together, figuring out how to work the soundboard and the mics and all that stuff. So that's a lot of fun. Guitaring too, so these are some classes for semester guitar one, secondhand guitar two. Kids usually move right into one, right into two, so they get their full year credit for finding our credit. It's a no previous necessary experience. It's, you know, designed so that using, you know, we've been talking a lot about the competency-based learning and it's kind of, I've been using an approach for that for the past couple of years, where students are able to run their individual progress and work kind of at their own pace. So a kid that comes in with previous guitar knowledge doesn't have to study through all the stuff they already know. They're able to skip ahead to new stuff. And if you want it, you can click on the show. This is what every student gets. Oh, yeah, I thought I was going to get carried there for a second. This is the, it shows every, every kid sees one of these, and it shows the different competencies I'd like for them to be able to work through, and then the week that they play. And then there's a rubric, I don't know if I can touch up here or not, probably. There's a rubric where I use to score when they play, and that figures into their grade. But there's also this other section here, melodies and picking, where there's different, different aspects of guitar playing that they learn and go through. And like I said, they're able to work at kind of their own pace. And, you know, I ask that they play a certain number of tests per week. And if they, if they're in the test, I give them to score that get on a particular test, come back and play it again, practice it, you know, play it more. I want you to be able to advance your skills, and so that's, that works. And I think that the CBL aspect of this worked really well, particularly for this time of class. So it's been, you know, I'm on the impact team and working through with that and setting this up. And that's, it's been very good. It's really helpful. A lot of kids are really doing some great things. And I've got two sections of that. It's a third hour and a seventh hour. Overall, it's about 50 kids total between those two classes that are working through guitar stuff right now. So that's kind of fun. The other option that students have is a class called Fundamentals of Music. This is a general music class, which means it's not performance-based. They're not playing on instruments and preparing for performances like some of the other ones are. But it focuses on the history of music and the mechanics of music creation, some music theory, some music history. We go through the first 2,000 years of music creation from the Middle Ages to modern times, focusing on European art music, so they get their fill of Beethoven, Bach, and Mozart, all that good stuff. And it's developed through the centuries. And in second semester, there's a really good curriculum called Teach Rock that goes through the history of rock and popular music in the United States, its creation, how it's evolved. We hit on all the stuff there with the jazz, pop, rock, country, hip-hop, and all that. And that's all there. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Michelle Dokers, and I teach No School High School Choir. So I'm going to talk about the high school portion tonight. Is it touched or not?
It's up to you.
So, just kidding. Here we go, maybe.
Oh.
Okay, thanks. All right, why do we do in choir? So I have a lot of different slides, I'm sorry. I'm also on the, 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 oh my gosh, the Impact Team, yes. And so our last assignment is Impact Team, what is basically, you know, how do we, what do we do? How do students relate that to things in the future? So, or your subject, how do we relate that to the real world? So I have started everything on board, and I have posted this. It's really small. Every day, this is on the agenda. But we, first and foremost, in a, with guidance, I mean, we do sing music that students choose. And again, that's with guidance. So, you know, there are times where I have to choose music. When we go to contests, like it's just, I have to choose. At the Christmas, they get to stay in love with performing at Christmas. Spring concert, they get to choose the pop songs that we do. For emotional connection and confidence appropriate to the music style, providing a fight with peer and self-feedback to improve individual and ensemble performance. We do a lot of self-evaluation in the class, and I do ask the sections, and this is in all classes, in choir, chorale, and show choir. You know, we sit there, we evaluate, how do we do? What do we need to work on? What do you feel like we need to work on in this section? Quickly, take, you know, 30 seconds to talk about any section, and then we look to me, and then we'll work on that the next day. We reflect on personal and group progress toward performance goals, understanding what singing in choir looks like in the real world, personal expression and enjoyment, career professional opportunities, practical life skills, discipline, patience, attention to detail, following music notion, develops focus in multitasking, singing in an ensemble strengthens listening operation and blending, just like working in a group setting, which mirrors real-world operation. So those are the things that I have posted on our daily agenda. Do they read that every day? Probably not. So musical literacy, prepare first and foremost for all district auditions and then contests in the spring, ask for chorale and in choir. Do you want to, do you want me to hear? I'll go to the bar. Okay, so we use Side Reading Factory, and this is just a little snippet of what we start the school year, and we do a lot of unison singing. And then we go, there we go, we go in four parts, so SATV, soprano, bass, and then we're in the So SATV soprano on the bass and then we're in the women choir, these sopranos and alto. And then I do have students come up and they kind of point and lead the rest of the class so we know that they know what we are doing in the classroom setting. And then we also perform, this, this is some of the fun things that we do throughout the year. Um, the national anthem at the Cardinals game, we do that and that's, that's middle school and high school. Um, and here's a little performance. We are submitting this, I just, we, we chose to sing at State Wrestling in, in, in March.
Hi, this is the Saint Genevieve High School Choir. We are auditioning to sing the national anthem at State Wrestling turn.
Oh say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed and the twilights as gleaming, whose brush tides and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Here's pictures of us go at the Cardinals game. And we do include alumni with us. Dr. Boyd actually performed with us last year and as well as Sister Jenna. And it was, it was a lot of fun. It's really cool to see future, our former students who come in and perform with us. Um, and then there's Fred Bird with all of us. I think you got to see us perform this year. Dokers, have you, um, can we just check the fall when your date is? Yeah, yeah. I know it now. Well, I mean, I have a date. I can check my Gmail and let you know. Yeah, it's crazy. Yes, okay, sounds good. So, yes, but we, um, we sing it actually this coming year, so we don't have to try to sell us tickets. We're doing that with America. So, um, I think we're, we're in, I think we're in September. It's a Sunday this year, so, or well, twenty sixth, so. But yeah, so it'll be fun. The kids will enjoy it. They love being down with you, getting to see the Cardinals play, opposing personal and Fred, of course. Um, we also require us to work with director college professors from around the state. The very first thing we do, and this is open to all school students in any of the programs. We participate in upper blue council, um, and Dr. Henry is the, the director of that. And it's, uh, if you guys have heard of the ambassadors of harmony, it's led by that organization. So on one day that's just sopranos and altos, um, and they get to, you know, go in four different parts and that's really neat, they get to learn a lot. And get to see, be with other schools from the Saint Louis area and see different demographics, which is really cool. Um, then here's the men from when they went. And then the end of that performance, um, they have the ambassadors of harmony come out and perform for the students. So that's cool. And, and they also pull in some of their college students to perform and they will also bring in this local Saint Louis music to perform for the student. Um, we also just got done with the soprano and the bass in triple A choir festival in October. And just a little snippet is the women's piece that they did. All right, so, um, we also, the corral singing at the Veterans Day assembly, and I just quickly snapped a picture before they started singing. There's no recording, I'm just, sorry. Um, and then, so basically what you're seeing is we have a lot of performance. This, all these classes are performance based classes. So we're working a lot on analyzing what we do and everything. Um, the students that made all district choir, um, they got to go just this past weekend and perform under Dr. Terrence Shivers. And he is currently in South Dakota, but he's from South Africa. So that was really neat to get to, um, work with him. And we had four students make the all district choir this year, Lucy Hunzley, Maddie Shuffler, Carter Hogan Miller and Teagan Graves. And actually Lucy and Teagan, they and Carter were able to audition for all state choir. And Teagan and Lucy received honorable mentions. So what that means is in the summer, they get to go to Springfield, um, yeah, Springfield, Missouri, and they can perform in the honors choir at that event. And then there's our clinician, Dr. Shivers. All right, Christmas walk weekend. This is an event we do every year. We do the lighting of the Christmas tree, Santa Claus gets to pose with us. Um, of course, we get to do, we perform with the Muni Band, which doc, or which doctor? You're a doctor now. Which Mr. Moody, Mr. Moody conducts and, um, we used to perform at the church, but this year we are performing at the Performing Arts Center. So we will have more room and the choir will hopefully actually be heard this year because we'll be mic'd. Okay, that's just some of the kids in the choir. Okay, M-triple-A music festival. So this we do in the spring and this is both the women's choir and corral. We go to Central and it's all of the, um, M-triple-A schools. Performing at contests, we are judged by judges. Um, this day we work with one clinician and he or she just kind of gives us a mock, um, what's the word I look for? Just like an evaluation of how we do. It's basically what would be like if we go to contests and what the judges there would do us. Um, and then after each school sings their two contest pieces, we then all get together and every school there performs together under the direction of the clinician. They perform one or two pieces. What, usually we prepare a piece and then they might teach us a, a piece by rote that night. Okay, contest for women's in corral. There we go, that's contest this past year. It was fun. We received a two rating, which is awesome. On, on scale one, two, three, four, one is the best and two and all that, which they're, they're scored like exemplary, I don't even know.
Outstanding.
Outstanding, yes. So they, they changed that up a couple of years ago. State solo and ensemble, so as Mr. Moody said a little bit ago, we do district solo and ensemble. And I had these three guys go to district solo and ensemble this past year. And, uh, Damian and Lo, and London both made it to state. And I couldn't leave Amy now, so Amy came along with us. So, and I gotta get this picture because you can see Saint Genevieve High School right there. So they posed for us. Um, both of these guys received a two at state, which is really good to receive that grade, or I guess really it's a silver. So that's really good to receive that at state. Guys again, and then also we're a family. I tell that and, you know, every day I'm like, we're a family. This is a place where everybody is welcome. And here's a picture of our corral, show choir. They don't really talk a whole lot about show choir, I'm sorry. Um, but basically show choir, again, performance class, uh, they perform at homecoming, then they perform at Christmas, and then they perform at the M-triple-A Sweet Choir Festival. And then again, in the, um, in the, the spring. So they're very busy behind the scenes. Um, they're just a smaller class and they have fewer performances throughout the school year. Um, and then this is them in the bottom as well. And then I needed a picture of my women's choir, so I took this picture today. They looked super excited at our concert on Monday. So they're like, really, you're taking our picture right now? I was like, yep. And then, okay, this is just some stuff that we did grab here. We have the homecoming parade. We have a lot of fun. I have our picture of Owen there. This is from last year before phones were illegal. Girls taking pictures. And then our seniors from last year. So, yeah. Any questions about the choir? I, I'm sorry it took so long. All right, thank you, guys.
All right, on to new business. And first item there is our annual audit.
I don't know if there's any good transition between those. But Mr. Jeff Kroter is here this evening, uh, to kind of go through our draft audit.
Good evening, good evening. I was actually struck with the idea that we missed a fantastic opportunity that if your news team could have presented the results of this audit, I, I'm much more entertaining than losing to me tonight. Uh, the first thing I wanted to do is explain, uh, why you do not have an audit report this year. Uh, we, we conducted the audit, we completed the work and the federal government is responsible every year for issuing the compliance supplement, is what it's called. The, it's about a three thousand page document, but the significance for us is it tells us what they expect us to test for each one of your federal programs. And that becomes part of the audit report. And it's usually issued every year in June and this year it is still not issued. So the Office of Management Budget is telling me that I cannot issue a report that says I conducted the audit in accordance with standards that do not exist yet. So, we tried to do what any good golfer would do and we threw a provisional. So what we've done is we've taken the compliance supplement from last year. We went ahead and conducted the audit with the idea that we think it's going to be pretty much the same as it was last year. So we, we've conducted our tests, we've completed the audit, but they're also telling us we can't issue it yet. So, uh, I wanted to talk to you tonight about what's going to be in your audit whenever we can finally issue the thing. So, uh, what we're, they're planning is that when the, the supplement is released, we check the supplement, compare it to what we've actually already tested. If there are no changes, we're good to go. We sign the report, send it to you right away and everything is great. Uh, if, uh, worst case scenario, they issue the supplement, we find out there's some new tests that's required, I'll get in touch with the, the district, we'll test whatever needs to be tested and we've, uh, make sure that the report still accurately reports what we have to. So now what I'll do is I'll try to briefly, uh, explain to you what is in the audit report that you're going to get. Uh, you've heard me talk before, the results have been good in the past. The results are still going to be good this year. Uh, we are planning to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statement. That's a clean opinion, that's the one you want. It's going to explain that it's our opinion, your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with modified cash basis account, created major funds of the district. That's the technical language that makes it clean to it. The report's gonna go on to explain the standards that I adhere to when I conducted the audit, the district's responsibilities, my responsibilities, fascinating, three dollars. Uh, catch that on your own. Uh, it's going to explain that whenever I conduct an audit in accordance with government's auditing standards, then I'm responsible for issuing another report. That report has to do with the district's internal controls and financial reporting. That is, how do we accumulate our information to be able to put it in a form that we can make financial statements about it? So I'm actually issuing an opinion on the internal controls, but I have to understand how they're designed and whether or not they're working to be able to conduct the audit. So I would find something that I would consider to be a deficiency in those internal controls. This is where I would report that. Now, unfortunately, we are going to, I don't know, I'm getting ahead of myself. Everything is great. Uh, we had no recommendations regarding the internal controls. So the second part of that report has to do with the district's compliance with various laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, things like that that are financial in nature that we're testing. And we report that we found no instances of non-compliance need to be reported for the report. So, uh, that's the second report that we issue. Now, the financial statements themselves, I don't want to take that much of your time to go back over what the financial condition was of June because I know you're aware of your financial condition. You see reports every month and that, I think that would just be taking up your time. Uh, a couple of highlights though, that I wanted to pass along. Uh, the fund, uh, balance overall, we saw a decrease of seven point three million dollars. Now, that sounds like not a good thing, but it actually dovetails exactly with what we were expecting because we're seeing the proceeds of, uh, the long-term debt from before this big spin on the capital outing. So it makes perfect sense, that's what we expected, that's what we're seeing. The, the, uh, second thing that, that stood out to me, it kind of was a highlight. Uh, the, we like to take a look at your ending fund balances of your, uh, educational fund, your general fund, because that's where the operations are recorded. Uh, we look at the ending balances of, uh, as compared to kind of a ratio with your expenditures from the combined, uh, general fund and the teachers' fund, because that's, that's what it takes to run the school. Your fund balance ratio is forty-seven percent and to give you an idea of how that compares, the GFOA, Government Financial Officers Association, they're kind of the gurus of government finance. They say that anything between twenty-five and fifty percent is considered to be strong and healthy depending on what type of organization you are. Forty-seven percent, you're at the very upper end of that. So, uh, to, to us, that should kind of show the stability, strength of your financial condition. Um, I just wanted to pass that along because a lot of times there's no good way to compare, how it will compare to other school districts or something, that's a good metric. The, uh, we made no significant adjustments, uh, that we recommended. Uh, that is also something that I always feel would be important to know if I were sitting in your shoes. A lot of times, before I can say those financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, a lot of my clients, sometimes we have to go in and say, okay, you need to make some corrections here. We gotta move this, we gotta move that, we gotta restate this. Sometimes we start making pretty significant recommendations on changes. I don't think we made any recommendations for any changes to your financial statements. So, uh, from, if I were in your perspective setting here, what that tells me is the financial records that you've been relying on for the last six months, making decisions, uh, those were accurate enough for me to put a clean opinion on before we had to make any adjustments to it. So I, like I said, just wanted to offer that to you. So, um, I know, I need to get moving. The, um, the part that is holding us up, uh, that I was talking about earlier, the federal testing. Whenever your federal expenditures are more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it triggers this extra level of audit that is required. Uh, starting next year, it'll be a million dollars. Not really gonna affect you guys because last year your federal expenditures were one million nine hundred and one thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. Um, we are required to test at least forty percent of those dollars worth of programs as a major program. And that's where we go in to do a deep dive on that program. Uh, your program that was major this year was the child nutrition cluster, that's your breakfast, lunch, uh, programs. Um, we are testing the obvious things you would expect us to test, uh, where eligibility calculations is done correctly, money spent properly, uh, and the federal government requires us even to get into the weeds on some of these things. Uh, some of the things we're looking at is, uh, if you spend more than twenty-five thousand dollars, look one vendor did to make sure that that person is eligible to do business with the federal government. So that's something we talked about last year. We found that, yes, that is being done. So with all of the compliance requirements we tested with this program, we did issue a report. It's another unmodified clean opinion, so we found no instances of non-compliance with any of the federal requirements. That's at least what it's going to say whenever I issue a report. Uh, they require the second part to go along with their report. They want to know about your internal controls specifically related to their programs and whether those are operated the way they're supposed to. Um, that's where our one recommendation came. And you probably are already familiar with this because it's going to piggyback on with, uh, the state's review, uh, of the program. So we had the, uh, instances where the bidding, uh, was done by, by, uh, soliciting, uh, prices where the, the actual manual says that, uh, anything over fifty thousand dollars, we're gonna request, uh, sealed bids. So, you know, is that a big deal? I'll let you make a decision on that, but it's something that the fed said that we have to include in the report, so we did. Uh, so that was our. So that was our only recommendation that we made, was just to make sure that what we're actually doing with the administrative program is in accordance with what our policy manager says.
Can I pause you there? So can we update our policy to say not counting food bids or something? Because I mean, it's food bid, right? I mean...
You can make revisions, but it will still have to fall within certain parameters that the federal government's got. So you do have some leeway there.
Okay.
I think...
I think that's probably...
Going through this process and working with the team that came in and audited us, really what Jordan was doing was, she thought she was doing the correct thing, and she was taking the low... Prices fluctuate from week to week and month to month, so next month, if this vendor is higher than that vendor, she's switching and getting the lower price. So we're going back and forth and doing that. There's just some record-keeping that we put in place after they came in and did the review, that we now think our language and how we're doing it complies with what they want to see.
So we're doing it a fiscally responsible way?
Yes.
Which is not her policy?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that the way the federal government tells you to do things is the most efficient or the most positive. I think everybody's had their own dealings with the federal government at all levels. But I do believe that the fix that you're planning to put in, or it actually already put into place, is going to take care of it.
Okay, cool.
So, that's usually the part that everybody wants to know about. There really is one more report that we do have included in the document that you don't have. It's going to be testing that the state, elementary and secondary ed requires that we go through several different pieces, and they want to know, are you doing those things the way you're supposed to? So along with all the other testing that we've already been performing, we're looking at transportation records, we're looking at attendance records. We're looking to see is can you accumulate the information to be able to report it, not only accurately, but in accordance with the DESI requirements? I've got people even out here climbing on school buses, checking off dominant readings in the summertime, so we're, some of our testing is pretty invasive, we apologize for that. But everybody's very patient with us and very helpful, we really appreciate that. But the last report that we have showed that of all of the different specific tests that DESI wanted us to perform, we found no instances of any problems with compliance, and that the information that has been submitted included in the report you don't have is accurate. So that is a way-too-long summary of an audit report that you don't have. But, you know, like I said, we've been in touch with Dr. Paul, we are staying in touch with DESI, and what they're wanting us to do is that we approach the deadlines, and we're also monitoring the Office of Management Budget every week to find out what's going to happen. Kind of our backup plan is with DESI's regulations, when we get to their deadlines, everyone will want to report. What we may have to do is we'll take the federal testing section out, we'll issue the report with everything but that, we'll get that to DESI, and we'll meet their requirements. Federal deadlines don't technically roll around until March 31st, so we still have a couple of months. Surely they'll give us something that we can use by then. So worst-case scenario, we have to, we'll reissue the report then as a complete report, and we'll get all the reporting requirements to the federal government at that time. So that's the explanation of where we're at, that's the plan for where we're going, and the summary of what you're going to have.
Are you seeing a lot of school districts failing, I'll say failing, by American language? Isn't that new?
It's fairly new. Yes, that's something that...
Is common?
Yeah, that's pretty common. That didn't help anything at all. They bit to... I'm a skeptical guy because I'm an auditor, so I don't really trust anybody. They were telling us that, you know, the supplement will be issued by late August, probably September, and I'm thinking, hey, that sounds reasonable, they could probably get it done by then. But I never expected it would take this long, so it's teaching me to, I have to increase my level of skepticism. So I'm really surprised that we are at this point where we are right now, November, but we're adapting best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's something to me, and we have the amended budget.
I provided you with a binder with the amended budget in it, I'm just going to hit some highlights. Regarding revenues, on page one, 5112, delinquent taxes, that was increased $125,000. We had some, a couple of months of data that I added to the projection, and I was confident that we should get $125,000 more, so I added that to the budget. 5141, investment earnings, we've spent some time with Bloomsdale Bank, taking some of our reserve funds and investing it with them. We've seen some positive impact from that, and so I increased that $30,000. Preschool parent pay is up significantly due to the additional kids that we have in preschool, and so that was increased $55,000. I'm sorry. Page two is 5141, investment earnings, and then page nine, I'm sorry about that, is 5182, preschool parent pay. And then on page 10, 5311, the basic formula, that was increased $1 million. That sounds significant. If we go through what occurred in the governor's original budget, leaving $300 million out in order to fully fund what the legislators passed, and then the legislators stepping to the plate, saying, we passed this legislation, we need to stand by it, they put the $300 million back in. That ended up passing, but I think some legislators felt some repercussions because of that, Leeken Huff being one of them. So the stance that the governor took by not putting that $300 million in, and then the stance that he took by his reaction to the legislators, putting it back in and getting it passed, tells us something about what might happen to appropriations as we move forward throughout the year. So I was hesitant initially that we were going after the $300 million shortfall, I was pretty conservative with that budget number. I'm a little more confident that we'll get closer to where we should be fully funded, not quite there yet based on my concern regarding the appropriation as we move forward. So that's why that was increased $1 million. The total adjustment was 1.21000, so $1.2 million on the revenue side. Before I move any further towards expenditures, do you all have any questions about the revenue component? On expenditures, all of the following that I'm going to discuss were adjusted based on a new payroll purchase order. Once you get a couple of months of payroll in, especially after a $1,500 raise to the base, and then a raise to the classified salary as well, and then the increase in our insurance costs of $100 per person per month. Once you get a couple payrolls under your belt, it becomes a little more, the picture becomes a little more clear. So we run another payroll purchase order, and Crystal helps out with that. And 6111, 6211, I'm sorry, let me go back, 6111 is certificated salaries, 6211 is PSRS, 6221 is peers, and there's no location for this, I'm just giving you general. Because it's all over the, we've got this in different sections, middle school will have these codes, high school will have these codes, elementary will have these codes. 6231 is social security, and then Medicare, I think, is 6232. All of those were adjusted, increased based on that new payroll purchase order that we ran. In addition, early childhood center updates were added. Anywhere you see a building code of 7,500, we weren't issued a building code by DESI when we came out with our original budget, so we couldn't put this information in there. Now that we have that code issued, it's 7,500 for the early childhood center, we were able to add all of those codes in and put them where they were supposed to be. And then Fund Four, on page 69. 6521, we added a roofing expense, and that went from an original budget number of $250,000 to 3.3 million. And if you'll remember, last year, the insurance company cut us an advance check based on all of our roofing damage, and so that was in last year's budget. In this year's budget, we're seeing that expenditure, and so that's why that amount went up.
So just a wash from one ear to the next?
Yes.
Fiscally, you're a little bit hurt, you got it, right?
Page 73, 6552, we purchased four buses, and that cost was $556,430. And then page 81. 4051, we purchased the land down at the bottom of the hill, and that was $110,000. And then finally, if you'll go to the last page in your budget books. Now, this is, this summary sheet is just revenues and expenditures. We don't take into account fund balances here. And so on projected balances for Fund One at 2.2 million, that increased 725,000 in this amended budget. Fund Three stayed the same, and then in Fund Four, that total amount went up $986,000. So overall, on the total side, we were at $953,000 deficit in the original budget, and we went up to 2.5, just over 2.5 million in deficit. Keep in mind, some of those revenues came in last year, and this does not include our fund balances here. Also, keep in mind, we are aggressive with expenditures projections, and we're conservative with revenue. So I don't anticipate that number being a final number. We're going to be much closer to where we want to be and more comfortable with where we end up. Several people I want to thank for helping out with this. Everybody in the board office helps out with budget, and running down things, and Crystal Roth, number one, Megan Donovan, number two, Erin Jelkis helps out, Brittany Gag helps out, Chrissy helps out, Bailey helps out, Jamie does her part, Lance does his part, everybody pitches in. It's not a one-person show. Everybody pitches in when it comes to budget because there are always variables that are underneath the umbrella of what somebody else is doing. So I want to thank everybody for helping out and getting this budget amended.
Any other budget questions? Do you need a motion to approve it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended budget for the 2025, 2026 school year.
Second? Jamie?
Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, and related, we have a bid for food service and small purchases.
Yes, so one of the components of fixing the issues that we had during the audit is this small purchase vendors. And I printed out, you can see that we had two bids, this is tremendously long, and the prices won't stay the same. This is our attempt at trying to meet the requirements and the changes that they wanted us to make, so that's why this is important.
Oh, what was he saying, if you're asking, you versus...
So if you think about... I see the invoices that come in through food service. I receive a binder clip this thick of invoices every month from food service that Jordan has to go through. Jordan and Lori are fantastic at being fiscally responsible and comparing one to the other. I watched him do it. And from a 30,000-foot view, once you reach a $50,000 mark and you need sealed bids, that seems to make sense. But when you're in the weeds and you're trying to buy bread from week to week or month to month and compare this company versus that company, and it being a 25-cent difference, which can be significant, or a 10-cent difference, and you're saving, you know, you're pinching nickels is what you're doing, and they're doing a great job. But from a framework perspective on trying to put procedures out there that everybody needs to follow once you hit that $50,000 mark, and now you need a sealed bid, how are school districts trying to do this supposed to do that? So we worked with the audit team that came in to say, what language do you want, how do you want us to do it? And it went back and forth several times, and we finally got them a draft, and they said, that addresses what we're wanting you to do. So this is part.
They're not going to have to change the way they're doing business, they're still going to...
It's still going to be pinching nickels together and comparing bid to bid, but it's the language that we've provided in the background that allows us to comply with the way they want it done.
It's not making their job any harder?
Yes, it absolutely is making their job.
It'd just be easier if they could just go to one company every single...
Yes, but that requires some trust, and when you're dealing with an audit team who's going to come in and say, what are you doing here, and where's the documentation for this? We understand that, it's important, we need to be transparent and be able to provide that documentation. But we also need to be able to pinch nickels where we can too, and save as much money as we can on the food service side. You all know how much food has gone up, we've seen it over the last several years, so trying to save money everywhere you can is important.
And then we'll have to get the sealed bid once every year?
It's...
I know they'll get pricing different, but technically the sealed bid is part of it?
Technically, I think the answer to that question is yes.
This meets the bio-American reading, correct?
I believe we have bio-American in everything.
In our language, yeah.
Yes.
So I'm making this motion, we're correcting for our audit essentially, and it's additional work on our staff, but our practices of being fiscally responsible for getting the best price for the food is going to remain correct this year.
How much more work is it on?
I mean, I'd have to pull them in to tell you the additional, but it's not just this. I mean, there are other things that came with them coming in and auditing our food service, and it wasn't Jeff and the audit team, it was a third-party company that came in. The way that Lori and Jordan explained it to me was sometimes DESI comes in and audits you firsthand, and sometime they partner with a third-party provider, and the third-party provider comes in. Well, interpretations are different on how they want things, and this third-party provider came in this time and audited us and caught us on this component of not being, not following the procedure to a T when it comes to trying to get the best price for bread and other food stuffs.
I'm not understanding, how can you get a sealed bid and keep, and I like that you're...
So these were the two bids, and so they listed, but these are current market prices. So as we move, the prices have already changed since the bids have been submitted.
Right, so just because you get the bids and you say we're going to go with Company A, you can still get your stuff from Company B?
So the reason I believe we've done it this way is we don't have to just go with Company A because next week their price is going to be higher than Company B.
So we can go back and forth between Company A and...
That's my understanding, yes.
As long as we get bid, sealed bid.
It's going to be, you know, staying in prices each time they place an order between these two companies.
And that's what Jordan was doing, she was pulling prices and saying, okay, we're going with them this month because they're cheap.
If the purpose is to have sealed bids to get the best possible price, right, like a construction project, that doesn't work with this situation.
You're right.
Right.
But it's still required.
Every month.
That's all, I understand.
It's still the purpose about trying to get the opportunity, competitive bids or whatever. This is kind of just a checklist, it's just saying, I don't know everyone puts us in this, so we're gonna do it. But in the, in the verb it, we're gonna say we're gonna still do what is most fiscal.
And some districts may not do what is most fiscally responsible, they may just say, I'm not doing that every week. I'm just ordering from company A.
Because it's a one, then you're done.
It's less salary they have to pay for someone to do that, but. I mean.
Right.
You're gonna make your money back easily by doing it this way. Twelve, I mean, twenty-five cents different, and Brad is getting eighteen loaves of bread for Thanksgiving, I mean.
Sixteen hundred eighty-three pots.
And that, you know, the frustrating part is, our people are being fiscally responsible and doing everything they can to save money. And then a third-party company comes in and audits you, and how do you apply a fifty thousand dollar sealed bid procedure to what they're doing? And that's, you know, Lori's mind exploded. She wants it in black, and give me the steps to do it, and I'm gonna do it the right way. And they have been doing it.
What if you only order your food?
All right, I will make a motion to approve the small purchase bids from Performance Food Group and U.S. Foods for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-two school year. An authorized superintendent or his, his does need to make purchases from their approved bid sheets as needed with consideration to given to quality cost and market fluctuations.
Okay.
Who do we say we said first?
I have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Problem solved. Any personnel changes approved during closed session will be provided in the draft meeting minutes within seventy-two hours of adjournment. Please.
Right, will I make a motion? Motion to adjourn the open session of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of San Antonio County, our two school district, and adjourn the open, the closed meeting with a closed record. Right, we have to do that.
We're just adjourning that open session.
Oh, sorry, we're just, okay, we're just gonna adjourn the open session and make a motion for that.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Happy Thanksgiving.